Pastor Matt Murphy with the Church of the Good Shepherd. Would you do our, where is Pastor Murphy?
He's right here.
Oh, cute. Cute. Okay, Pastor Matt Murphy, Church of the Good Shepherd. Would you do our?
Thank you. That's what I can.
Basically, Matt, I think you said you didn't like the pastor. That's okay. It's all right.
Go on, Rastman.
I just want to read a couple verses and I'll pray. This is First Timothy. It says, "First of all, then I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgivings be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way." So, let's pray. Lord, I thank you for your grace for us today, God. Without your grace, none of us would be in this room. No one would even be alive. We thank you for the kindness that you've extended to us through Jesus Christ. And I'm thankful, God, that we don't owe our lives to anyone but you, but you tell us to pray for those who are in high positions and positions of leadership. And so I thank you for all who are in this room or serving on the board and who are here today to be a part of this meeting. I'm sure there's many who are in positions of leadership. But you tell us to pray for all people. And I just pray right now, Lord, for those in this room who are husbands and wives and mamas and daddies and grandparents, so important, such a leadership role in this world. And I pray that you would provide the grace for them to be able to do what you have called them to do, both unto you and for those that are in their responsibility. I pray, God, that you would just allow us to encourage one another and to lift one another up, to point people to you. You are so kind, so powerful. And I thank you for the people that are in this room and for all those who lead and serve in different capacities in this community. And I pray, God, your blessing upon them, that you would give them the grace to do what you've called them to do for your glory and for your honor. God, thank you for the community that we share in here. Thank you for those who serve and protect and who lead with dignity. And I pray, God, that your name would be glorified in every part of our lives, Lord, in our homes, in our churches, in our communities. And we just thank you for this moment, Lord. May you be blessed today as this meeting is held and as people are a part of it. In Jesus' name.
Amen.
Thank you. Supervisor Jones, would you do the prayer?
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Isn't it nice to be normal again? We're all so cozy together.
I'm sure, I'm sure you mean that, right?
I'm liking it.
I did play my part.
Uh, well, normal. First up is Mr. John Ray with the Gulf Coast Business Supply Company to discuss ribbon cutting invitation, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for y'all today.
Good night.
I come to you guys not asking for anything, believe it or not.
We love you.
Wanted to just, first of all, thank each and every one of you. I'm the owner of Gulf Coast Business Furniture and Supply on D.O. Road in Gulfport. And been there, believe it or not, 31 years, well, 32 years. So, it seems like yesterday when I first started. Thanks to you guys and the city and everybody else up and down the Gulf Coast, made a rather substantial improvement, renovations to the building. And we're going to have a ribbon cutting now that all of this COVID thing seems to be relaxing. And wanted to personally come up and thank you for your business. Make mention of Larry Benfield, my condolences for each and every one of you that work with him, a special man in my life. So, I just wanted to say that. And I've got some business cards and invitations, if I might just pass them out. Do all, how about if I just leave them up here and you guys spread them out? Is that all right?
That'd be good.
And then, I'm going to leave a few of those.
Thank you.
And if you don't mind, I'd love to see each and every one of y'all out there on Friday the 20th. We've got a beautiful showroom, furniture showroom, new interior design department. Lovely lady that does all our interior design, graduated from USC a year and a half ago. So, I wanted y'all to know that we've got, not only the supply businesses, y'all have been so kind to purchase from us over the years, but now we've got a full-fledged beginning to end furniture department that can fulfill any need for anybody up and down the Gulf Coast, from design, planning, systems, layout, anything you can think of. So, often you guys have had to go out of town sometimes for big projects like this. So, just wanted to know, we're built and ready for anything y'all could throw at us and would love to, the opportunity to bid whenever things like that come up. Sheriff, thank you so much for all y'all do out there for us. I don't get a chance to come up and say this very often, but y'all have been so kind to us and allowed us to bid on all types of different projects through COVID situation. We were there for y'all and y'all reached out to us, even, gosh, I'm going back to Hurricane Katrina, I'm going back to all kinds of different things over the past 32 years that y'all have a big grace to come up and help us with and look to us when y'all needed support and supplies. So, once again, we'd love to see you guys out there. And I got first drink and all appetizers. Calvin with Nailme Catering is going to be catering, so I'd love to see each and every one of y'all out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Very nice. Usually we're getting chewed out, no?
I was neglected in asking for a moment of silence for our camaraderie. Supervisor, the late supervisor Larry Benfield, so if we could just bow our heads for a second. Thank you all. He was a great guy and I'm sure he's, I'm sure he'll miss him.
Prayers for Patty, too.
And I also have a request from Paul Ladner to take number, agenda number five, item five, off of the agenda. That was brought to you, so we're going to have to take that off the agenda. Okay, moving on. Number two, let's recognize Rhett Westerman with Deep South Communications to protest bid award for Harrison County IPMPLS Microwave System Maintenance Replacement Project. Is Mr. Westerman here? Thank you. If you'll come give your name and address. And just for the record, Ms. Wiggins, we're going to give this gentleman about five minutes and then we're going to ask our legal counsel to address. So, if you wouldn't mind, keep your remarks about five minutes.
I will go real quickly and because I'm going to turn it forward to Mr. Westerman. My name's Adam Stone and my partner Katie Pick and I represent Deep South Communications. As you noted, Mr. Westerman's here on the Microwave System Maintenance Replacement Project and he was a bidder that did not get the bid and he wishes to protest that. Some of the communications that have happened already related to whether this appeal would be timely or not, and we submit that it is. The decision of the board that was made on March 1st, 2021, was contingent on approval by other agencies, specifically the WCC and a few others. Under Parker v. Natchez, that means that that was not a final decision. And as we look at this very clearly under the case law, Lounes County versus McLennan, the board can reconsider its decision. And what we're dealing with here is an issue of public safety that is truly important. And we have read the specs. We believe that the specs read to allow communications for your first responders and others during a major hurricane. And as Mr. Westerman is about to explain, we do not believe that the bid that was contingently awarded on March 1st, 2021 will do that. So, with that, I'll let Mr. Westerman explain.
Hey, good morning. Thanks for taking some time to listen to me. I want to start off by saying, I think what I'm about to talk to you about, you're going to find important. The solicitation that you put out, as he just indicated, is for the communications to the backhaul system to transport the sheriff, the EMS, the fire communications for all your first responders. And you guys are interested in a system that's going to work in a hurricane with 150 mile an hour winds. That's the intention of what you're looking for. And so what I'm going to show you here is what you have or what you're about to award this company won't do that. And I'll explain that to you in just a second. So, it's, I think it's pretty important. People's lives can be at stake. The people in your district will have a potential impact on this. Let me start off by saying, there are a few things on the way the wind works, hurricane winds, if you listen to the news, they'll say a hurricane category five is coming, 150 mile an hour winds. And so those winds are defined different ways. So, if you're building a boulder rise down the road, those winds are defined with a three-second gust. International Business, I mean, IBC has a code that defines how the winds are what they are. Right. And the hurricane winds are defined with a Saffir-Simpson scale. And so 150 mile an hour hurricane wind is equal to 180 mile an hour wind on a three-second gust. And the respondents that you have all have proposed an antenna system that was made by a company called RFS. And those antennas and the spec sheet says they're good for 155 mile an hour winds. But that's with a different wind definition. That's a wind definition which is even different from the three-second gust and a Saffir-Simpson scale. It's defined what the fastest mile. And so that wind, 150 mile an hour hurricane wind, is 169 miles an hour on the three-second, on the fastest mile with the spec sheet. And so these people, all three respondents other than us, send in a thing that says, hey, these antennas are good for 155 miles an hour, but that is, that's 155 mile an hour and a fastest mile wind speed. And so the hurricane wind speed, that would be much lower than the 150 that you're looking for. So, the bottom line is that all three respondents other than us have responded with a RFS brand antenna that will not meet the requirements for you. This is a, it's a simple mistake. It's a common mistake that engineers make, but unfortunately, this can have a huge impact on your system, your first responders being able to communicate when they need to, and people's lives being at stake. Any questions on that part?
You got about one minute.
Okay. So, another thing is on the, in the bidding evaluation, TUSA suggested that we weren't compliant. And I'm going to show you a couple things that we were. In the response, TUSA says that we, we didn't specify the radios that we were going to be using. And in fact, that's not true. And in the paper that you have that lays that out, it shows you where those radios are specified. It also says that we didn't provide what he says is customary for respondents to provide on a solicitation response. And those are a lot of details about the design that we're going to be using. And the reason we didn't provide that is, one, the solicitation didn't request it. And two, that anything that we provide is going to change in a few weeks after we go do the design. So, whatever we provide is no good. It's going to change and by the time we do the design, and it's, it's just not going to be any good. And so what the other people have provided, they've even acknowledged in their response that these are just preliminary. They don't count, they're not, it's not going to be what you use. And so I would all do that we are in fact compliant.
Can I ask our legal counsel, and I'm not trying to cut you off, it's obvious to me this might be going to the next step in a courtroom and so we kind of have to be careful what we listen to now.
Okay.
But let me ask our legal counsel to maybe address some of this.
Mr. Martin, before that, can I hand out the letter?
Sure.
I might give it to copy and everything. I was trying to go fast and I neglected to do that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just don't want you to think I'm cutting you off. There's a reason.
Yeah. And I think this is important. People's lives are at stake in your districts. And I'm not saying that just to be saying that. It's actually in fact true. You want a system that's going to work in 150 mile an hour hurricanes, what you're about to award to this company will not do that. And I can show you that emphatically, absolutely, that that's the case.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And it may be for?
Jody.
Jody, did this go through E-911 bid or did it go through our purchasing? Our purchasing?
Our purchasing, yes.
Okay.
Did E-911 consult on this?
I'm sorry?
Did they consult on the bid?
Yes, yeah. It was in conjunction with E-911.
In conjunction, all right. Mr. Hall.
I think that unfortunately, they're late. They had 10 days from the date of the, with all due respect to counsel, I think ultimately the board awarded on the date that awarded the bid, the contingencies are not contingency on the award of the bid. And they had 10 days to file a bill of exceptions. They had 30 days to file a notice of appeal before the circuit court. And in my opinion, that, that has become final and they can, no longer can appeal. In addition to that, TUSA, who is the consultant, the county retained, has made recommendations which the board followed. It certainly cannot be arbitrary and capricious where you rely upon the expert to devise the board what to pick. Their bid, as I understand it, was not only not, was rejected because it was, didn't comply with the specification, but it also was not the lowest bid. The other bids were. And so there's an analysis that was provided to the board from TUSA on that. And I think they're unfortunately, they're late. Now, they're going to argue they didn't get notice. They did get notice. They got notice just like the public gets notice. We have a published agenda that comes out on Friday. I went back and verified that this agenda was in fact published and posted on Friday before the board meeting. This is a one and a half, $2 million project and rounded. It's incumbent upon these people, vendors that are bidding on projects, to check the agenda. We have two meetings a month. So, you know, they got notice just like everybody else in the world gets notice to a board agenda. They're bound by that. The action was taken, an appeal was taken within 10 days. A notice of appeal, a notice of appeal was filed within 30 days. So, unfortunately, if they file an appeal, I feel confident the court will dismiss the contingencies that are in the order or not contingencies that affect the board's action. Now, if, if the board attorney looks at the contract and finds a problem with the contract, that's a different issue. We have to come back to the board. It doesn't have anything to do with the award. If the board attorney were to come back and say this contract is not recommended, then we would have to either go back to the bidder or rebid it. If the WCC has some issue with it, then that could come back for the board for consideration, but it does not affect the board's decision that was already previously made about the lowest and best bid. I don't see anything they can do about that. The board has, it does have the right to reconsider things if it decides to do so.
And we ask that you do that. Because again, this is something important. This is your public, your district, the people that live in your districts. Their lives can be at stake when the next hurricane looks over here that has 150 mile an hour winds. The way your system is designed right now, it's supposed to be not just survival. That means the towers aren't supposed to blow down and put them by, it's supposed to be operational during that time. And what you have and what you're about to do, if you go the route you're taking, you're not going to have what you're asking for.
Supervisor Rocco has a comment, I'm sorry.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
My concern with that is they're a vendor. I don't have any idea. It's way beyond my brain ability or my common sense.
Well, so let me answer that.
But let me finish.
Okay.
We have experts that were retained, consultants just by the board. You're a competitor. You're trying to get a bid.
Right.
So, your analysis of what TUSA has or TUSA, what I call it, what they said or what the other people, E-911 thought, may be different, but you're a competitor trying to get a bid at, which makes that a little bit of a, you're tabling your product. I'm the best lawyer in the room, I promise you. Well, I don't mean that, I'm kidding, but.
Trisha is, just kidding.
Trisha is. Other than Trisha.
Well, let me just add this.
So, I mean, my point is, is, you know, when we start saying rhythm, this is a problem, then we have experts that have said it's not a problem.
And so I understand what you're saying. Let me just add this, and I didn't have the chance to do this. I'm actually an expert. I'm a double A from LSU. I designed antenna systems for a living, for the military. I did that for many years. The antenna systems I designed are in ships, on airplanes, on land, on missiles. They're all over this globe. And so I feel without a doubt, I'm an expert in this. Also hold contractor license in 30 something states and Puerto Rico. So, I'm not just a contractor up here that knows very little about installing an antenna. I'm also an engineer. I've designed antenna systems. I've designed microwave systems. So, I do consider myself an expert. And I'm telling you here today, that if you go down the path that you're going, you're going to have a system that can fail that I don't think you want.
Supervisor Rocco.
And I think you can decide to listen to me now if you want.
Supervisor Rocco.
That would be my only concern, is that we somehow get a second opinion on, as far as the, get a second opinion on the wind load of our towers and what he has brought to our attention.
I think the board has a right to take his comments into consideration, ask TUSA to address them without reconsidering anything at this point.
I think that's.
So, we can do that? We can ask?
We can ask TUSA to comment on his position.
Concerns.
I think they did in the letter. They said, I don't understand, but again, I'm not an expert. I've addressed that officially.
That's true.
But with that, we don't have to reconsider things. At this point in time, the decision was made. You can open up the indoors box by, when times have run, by reconsidering things. The board can take his comments into consideration and ask TUSA and ask E-911 to look at it. E-911 to look at it and tell us what they think or don't think. Without reversing your decision you already made.
I'd like them to put that in writing to TUSA.
Jones, they got a whole stack of documents up here they want to offer, so.
It's on there.
Well, Tim, you said we'd like them to comment on, I agree with Supervisor Rocco, needs to be in writing and it needs to be up to the Stanford Simpson scale because he's absolutely right. And the Wireless Communication Commission should have given us the standards to begin with. So, we need to go back there. You also said that they told you you didn't qualify because you didn't show preliminary things like which radios would be used. If he was kicked out arbitrarily, I think he does have a chance to revisit that. That's my opinion.
I think the board can look at that if they want to. They don't have to make a decision now.
Yeah.
So, what's the board's pleasure?
Well, at this time, I'd just like, maybe table it until we have more information.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion.
Do we have a second?
Table and what?
Table.
There's nothing to say.
He's just here to be recognized and discuss it. So, if the board wants to get a report by the next meeting, I think there is a report already done. It was sent Friday.
Couldn't we see that report?
I don't know. I don't have it right with me. We can look at it and see.
Just have, perhaps TUSA come at the next meeting and explain his.
Okay.
Yes, that's what I'd like.
I see that.
That's good. TUSA here for my case.
He'll, they have something he might.
They're here now.
They told CNN, maybe they can address it. I don't know if this is the place they're trying for.
Mr. TUSA is here right now.
Right now, I don't know.
Yeah. I think that'd be great.
Get it out of the way.
Mr. Hall, if there is going to be a review, we would ask that he be given the opportunity also to review what we submitted because that was really for the benefit of not putting the board in the position that Mr. Hallman was rightfully concerned about, that he's advocating his position. We did bring a fair amount of evidence.
Really what we're here about is they're asking you to reconsider your position. That's the only issue that's here today. If the board doesn't reconsider its position, then the decision stands. They can try to appeal from the reconsiderate or refuse to reconsider. I think it'll go very far, in my opinion, but.
Mr. Gill Bailey, come shed some light on this, please.
I want to ask Gill, because he starts from there. Mr. TUSA said the side was there.
TUSA.
Supervisor Ladner has a question.
Gill, I think, is this one in the specifications where their office had to be within a certain distance of Gulfport and they located in Baton Rouge, Louisiana?
Yes, sir, that is.
Is that a significant part of specifications, Tim? Because I know we've had that issue with buy trucks.
It's something the board has the full, take it into consideration.
That would be included in the specifications through the sound and response.
You talk about the lowest and best bid, distance is a factor and the board has the right to take that into consideration.
Also, to answer Supervisor Powers' question, this particular bid probably has gone through more scrutiny by review committees than anything I've done in my 49 years in doing this. Not only was it reviewed for bid specification compliance through county purchasing agent, it went to the public procurement review board for review before it was bid. Once the bids were received, they were sent to the public procurement review board for confirmation that we complied with all the requirements. Then, once we made a selection, it did go to the Wireless Communications Commission. We did review and find that our selection was appropriate and we do have approval from the Wireless Communications Commission to proceed with this project.
What about the wind issue? Any problems?
I'll let Mr. TUSA address that.
Where's Mr. Tusa? Hi. Would you state your name so we'll know?
Yeah, Dominic Tusa, the founder of TUSA Consulting Services. I've been working with you all for a number of years. I was the designer of the current radio system back in 1999. And it was expanded to a countywide radio system, student 2001. It has survived through Katrina. Towers were rated at 140 miles an hour at that time. We use the, we, the records at least according to what happened when Hurricane Katrina hit the Gulf Coast. That was the target that we used in designing the radio system. And it did operate, it was in fact the only radio system that was operational throughout Hurricane Katrina. In the aftermath, the microwave antennas survived just fine. The towers survived the hurricane. In our opinion, the antennas that were provided by Communication International and one other bidder met the wind speed requirement in the specification, which was 150 miles an hour. These antennas are rated at 155. They can be further strengthened if that's the desire of the county. But the specification was met by at least, actually all three bidders, except in this case, the one that we reviewed from Deep South had no information at all about the antenna systems that they intended to use. There was no data provided in their bid package. So, we couldn't evaluate it. They were not disqualified by TUSA Consulting Services. We just felt that some of the information that was provided was incomplete. We evaluated the cost based on the factors that were provided in all the bidder's responses. And this has all been reviewed by county purchasing. So, again, we stand, my company stands firm with the recommendation that we provided, that Communication International was the lowest cost, best value based on the open procurement. All the vendors had opportunity to ask questions, to get clarification during the bidding process. There were agenda that were provided by county purchasing to all bidders. Everyone knew what the requirements were, minimum requirements. And it's a bid. It's not a request for proposal. With a request for proposal, there's latitude in evaluating different responses by vendors and you can actually weigh them and rate them. In a bid, it's either you met the requirement or you didn't. And if you, if you couldn't meet the requirement, it was your responsibility then to provide questions and gain clarification during the bidding process to potentially change the specification. So, at this point, our recommendation stands. We still believe that Communication International was the low and most compliant bidder.
I want to make sure I understand something. You said that Deep South did not submit specifications.
Not for the antenna systems. They claimed that their antenna systems would meet and exceed the requirement, but there was no documentation in their package that indicated.
It's simply a statement that they would meet.
Right.
Did the other bidders submit?
Yes, they did. They provided specifications sheets.
Documentation, specification sheets, too.
In addition, the saying that it would comply. And Communication International, all the bidders had to provide a performance bond. So, if in fact, during the construction of the project, for whatever reason, they were non-compliant with the specification, they were excited for it and didn't correct that defect, then effectively the county could attach the performance bond and get another vendor to either repair it or force them to repair it.
What other, what other conditions that were not met as far as specifications in the bid document?
From memory, the one that stood out was the one that, you know, the district wanted to have a local service provider, one that was within the area, at least along the Gulf Coast, so they could respond to hurricanes and that sort of thing quickly. And, and the other bidders, one bidder had a service facility up in Jackson, outside of Jackson, Mississippi. The other two were local, but within the 30 mile range. The other two were local, within the 30 mile radius of Gulfport.
Let me actually address one other issue. About all I know about radios is how to turn them on and turn them off.
Right.
But, I would ask you, I think they mentioned something about the, apparently when it comes time, that the specifications for the radios are going to change even after they bid at a certain type of radio? Did I misunderstand that?
If in fact, the, well, first off, they were placing a microwave system that's already in place. All right, so you already have a configuration that's operational and working and has a known performance level. Not all these radio towers the county owns. In fact, two of them are leased. One of them's a utility company, the other one belongs to a broadcast company. So, the idea is, at least, my belief is that the vendors, based on the information we provided them, would locate the antennas at exactly the same positions that are there now. They would replace them one at a time. That's a configuration issue that's worked out during the initial design review meeting that's held with the successful bid.
So, if I understand correctly, help me out with the antennas.
Yeah.
The antennas that have been, that we're talking about, well, how additional radios in the future, as the radios improve? I'm not sure I understand-
Well, the microwave system is one that can function with the current radio network that you now have, which uses a legacy connectivity using telephony T1 circuits via microwave. New technology, which eventually you will replace the radio system you currently have because it's 20, about 22 years old now, it's at the end of life.
Is that the P25 that we're talking about? So, the antennas that we're talking about now will handle the P25 radios when they come online?
Right, yes. The microwave system is capable of supporting both types of technology, using the IP connectivity, Ethernet connectivity, the new P25 configurations require versus the old legacy T1 circuits that the current system- And that's another thing. Communication International is an authorized Harris radio dealer. Part of this work involves interfacing the new microwave equipment, the old radio system. There could be some difference, difficulty in doing that if the vendor isn't fully knowledgeable how EDAX technology, the radio technology works. Communication International is an authorized service station for EDAX and they actually maintain the, part of the radio system operated by the state of Florida, which is a statewide law enforcement radio system called SLURS. So they have the in-house capability of making this transition seamlessly.
May I ask one more question? Can, and can the equipment that you're about to install, my husband's radar and communication, but I didn't listen. Radar and communication, but it, can that, can that, can those, can that equipment, I'll spit it out in a minute, can that equipment be upgraded for the wind loads that may be predicted to be worse than that?
The antennas, yes. They could be strengthened even further than the 150 mile an hour wind rating that the specification asked for. The towers, however, are not rated that high. And the other thing you have to consider too, when you have catastrophic winds such as a Cat 5 hurricane that exceed 150 miles an hour, it's not just wind that's flying around in the air. You've got debris, pieces of houses, buildings that are in the atmosphere. They can hit the antenna or transmission lines and damage it. No microwave or any antenna vendor can provide a guarantee that their antennas are going to survive in that environment.
I just have one comment or question, I guess. So what he says about the three-second gust actually going to 189 miles per hour, the fastest mile wind, could be 169. Are you saying here today that what you're proposing will be up to that? Because you said it could be further strengthened.
I'm not proposing anything to him. I'm the radio consultant for the county.
Well, I know, but what's your opinion on that?
My opinion is, is that yes, it will be successfully operational during an event of 150 mile an hour sustained wind, which is what the specification asks for. The towers themselves are not rated at that high of a wind speed.
And that's fine, but you understand my question? His point is the three-second gust can get up to as high as 189. So saying 155 in my mind, and I swam in Katrina, just to let you know. I was out there for eight hours. And in a newsroom, the only thing that worked was a ham radio operator, and that's a fact. So I'm just curious-
Yeah, I'm one of those, too.
Okay, well, thank you. You're saying that the microwave still worked, but we were using ham. Is that the same thing?
No.
Well, then, how did it-
When I talk in the same language-
Well, you said during Katrina, they worked.
The radio system, the communication system that's used by Public Safety in Harrison County was fully operational during and after Hurricane Katrina. In fact, it was the only radio system along the Gulf Coast-
Okay.
-that survived Hurricane Katrina.
So why do we have to use ham?
Excuse me?
So why didn't anything, okay, I could be wrong. Am I making sense?
Y'all should use ham. We never lost-
Y'all still have yours? Okay, fantastic.
We had tower issues where you couldn't, you know, not immediate, but as far as the radios itself-
Well, I know. But you still, okay, great. So all I'm concerned about most of it is 189 miles per hour, because I do agree with that. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, Supervisor Jones, maybe we should-
Yes, just want to make sure I get my understanding correctly. Your train of thought is if it gets up to gusts up to 169, 180, it won't work. But you're saying if it gets up to 150, which is what the specification-
That's what the specification-
So the specification doesn't say it wants to be 150.
Right.
Okay, it's the board.
Mr. Tusa, did he get a chance to read what we submitted?
One minute.
Oh, okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, did he get a chance to read what we submitted on the wind? If not, I think it would behoove him to read that before he was-
What did you submit that was different than what was in the original complaint?
Let's, let's not worry.
Just basically, there's the 150 mile an hour winds that the RFES, RFES doesn't manufacture antennas that will work over, in 150 mile an hour hurricane winds. They don't manufacture antennas that do that. And so the marketing stuff that you see, the specification says it's good for 155 miles per hour, it does say that. But what that is, is that's a three-second gust, which is 100, it's a different wind speed. You're comparing apples to oranges. Just like if you go measure the temperature in Celsius and Fahrenheit, you're going to get two different numbers, but you're measuring the same thing.
Okay, sir, sounds like this is going to go a little further than it is in this room right now. So with all due respect-
Could I have one more specific?
We're going to wrap this up and I think you've already mentioned that you're probably going to go ahead and take this to Circuit Court. So, is the board, does the board have anything to ask? Anything else?
Please just a minute. Let me show you this. They asked to introduce all these exhibits of the evidence before the board, along with this letter, so-
I make a motion that we spread on the minutes. Or acknowledge receipt of, I don't know if we spread on the minutes.
Stack of evidence. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Let me clear that up.
No.
Spread on the minutes, I think you should, like, acknowledge receipt-
Acknowledge receipt of, that's what she said.
File the clerk of the board, the record keeper.
That's how it changes.
So we'll keep it on file.
Yes, she said that.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you for your time.
Could I add one more?
No. Okay, so now we are at number three.
No action.
No action, let's go. Let's recognize Mr. John Lipscomb to discuss short-term rentals near his property at 24250 Arcadia Farm Road. Mr. Lipscomb, are you here? And you two have five minutes. While I'm being tanned, because normally it's only three.
I think I can-
Go give him five minutes.
If you excuse, I don't want to pause the record.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Got it. Tim, Tim, state your name and address.
My name is John Lipscomb, I live at 24250 Arcadia Farm Road. And I am here to talk to you about rights and protections of property owners from people who are short-term leasing their homes or short-term renting their homes on weekends. I'm here with my neighbor, Mr. Mark Rittner. I live on the west side of the home that we're talking about. He lives on the east side. Starting in November of 2020, they started short-term rentals. I understand, because Mr. Lattner and I have spoken, he asked me to bring this before the board, that there are no regulations about short-term rentals in Harrison County at the moment. So I'm asking that you consider some of these recommendations I'm going to make. So when y'all do finalize or propose that some of these things are, can be considered. Because Mark and I are concerned about, and what I'm concerned about living next to this is, I've lived at this property for over 25 years. I live, if you're familiar with Arcadia Farm Road, it's a really beautiful area on the marsh in Pasture Shand, leading out into Bay St. Louis. With short-term rentals, we all of a sudden have people vacationing next door to us. And when I say vacationing, I mean vacationing, just like us when we don't vacation.
Or, noise. Like us when we don't vacation.
Sure.
That's what he said, he said.
And you might have as many as 10 people. What we've seen is that a lot of the people that come, they have friends in the area. So it's not just the 10 or 8 or 6 people renting the property. There are people that are driving in and out, but Mark and I consider transient people coming and going, you don't know who they are. So, these friends of the short-term renters become a problem. Or, at least they become a problem in our minds. We're wondering who they are and are they supposed to be over there? And what are they doing? One other thing about Arcadia Farm Road, there are a lot of us like Mark who live there, but there are also a lot of weekend people. A lot of houses are-
And they're short-termers, Tim.
A lot of weekenders. So there's not, not really short-term rentals. But, so what we do, the people up and down the street, put their trashcans up, follow them, look after their yards, that type of thing. Because you never, you just never know, people driving up and down the road can tell if no one's home. And trashcan's one of the biggest things that'll tell if someone's home. Security is a concern of just who the folks are, does this make us less safe? Again, what Mr. Holland said, noise, music, lights. Cars coming and going, go out at night, come back late. I kind of understand that on Friday or maybe a Saturday, Tuesday, not so much, when car doors start slamming at 2:00 in the morning. And it's not one car door, because there's 8 or 10 people there. You have eight car doors slamming.
Do y'all have an HOA?
Excuse me?
Do y'all have an HOA?
Home Association?
Yes.
Not active, no.
Well, that might be your first step, then you could maybe do something.
More than I may, they have restrictive covenants on the subdivision that prohibits the activities that he's complaining about.
Then what? There you go. Then there you go.
But he has to have an HOA to enforce it.
No, neither, he can enforce those himself, he can file-
Can I do that?
Yeah.
I was not aware of that, will you wear more?
He can file, here's a copy of them. This is part two, you're part of part one, but they got me part one, too, they're exactly the same. I can send it to you if you want.
I'd be glad to have that.
These are the restrictive covenants, prohibits any commercial activity whatsoever. Also prohibits boarding houses. Not used for any commercial purposes whatsoever. Savings, that lot's described as commercialized on the plat file of record. On the plat, I don't see anything that's commercial where you are.
Well, and that's what, that's what we were concerned as far as commercial versus residential, what was considered, what.
That's commercial if you're leasing it.
Well, that's what Mr. Lattner and I discussed.
If the board, man, Mr. Lattner talks about it, we researched it. There's multiple issues you have to deal with. You can do it through zoning, the problem with doing it through zoning is-
It affects the whole county, not everybody in the county.
No, that includes anything that's present.
Toe wouldn't help him anyway.
The other way you can do it is to adopt, to adopt an ordinance that prohibits short-term rentals. Many cities have done that. You could limit that to, I didn't research this, but I was thinking about it when I was looking at this over the weekend. You could limit it to residential subdivisions, I think. Therefore, you wouldn't be applying the county laws to residential subdivision. But most subdivisions-
Have covenants.
If property owners look at their covenants, they'll find out that there is a restriction. Right. Everybody has them pretty much. This is older now, so a lot of people don't know they even got it. If you wrote a letter to these folks saying cease and desist, that would be risking, that would change your court, you'd probably get attorney's fees and expenses for having to do that. They most often stop if they know it's by the restrictive covenants. Get your attorney or you write them a letter and quote that and say, "Stop." And see if they stop or they don't stop, then you have to join them. Courts will enforce these covenants.
Property owners associations are, can be very, very effective if you just put them back together.
But the covenant's already there, so really you don't even need to do that. You just need to take that covenant and follow through.
Do you need to continue with the rest of the board on that?
I don't think so, because you're dealing with-
Just give them, they're right, you already have the power to make a stop.
Then you have to see counsel.
You're a lawyer, you're writing a letter, and if they don't do that, you can sue them and change your court to enforce those restrictive covenants. And I'm telling you, the courts will enforce these restrictive covenants. It will stop that activity. And they can be made to pay attorney's fees and expenses and have made them do that because they're violating the covenants. So these are valid, I think they would help you.
I appreciate it. May I come up?
I will say this, Mr. Lipscomb is not the only ones in, in other gentleman here, not the only ones. We've had this in other places, this beginning, apparently to be a problem. I, for one, don't want to take a shotgun and kill an ant. That's, I agree to that. However, I think people in residential areas have a right not to have commercial activity next door to them. So, if this really becomes a problem, I think this is the best solution right now is to do as he says, you know, enforce your covenants. But if we start having a problem with this, I think that's something we really need to revisit. And I presume the other incident we're talking about in Henderson Point will have the same type of covenants. I'm not sure, did you have a chance to look at that?
I did not look, I didn't have a specific lot number for that one, so I have to get the lot.
I did look at theirs, and they do have a Henderson Point. It's not an HOA, but it's similar. It's an association that has, that they can put that covenant in, because I did do a little research on that one.
Well, if they have-
They probably have covenants. Most, most of them have that-
But it's an association, but it's acting as an HOA.
But the covenants have to be in place, and that's what I'm asking him to look at to see if the covenants are in place for that particular area as well.
Get his address so I can find the lot.
I can do that, that's all we can do that.
Thank you so much.
But I think that's the best solution. I don't want to expand into a lot of things unnecessary, but it needs to be protected.
That's for part two. The lot's in part one, but I did get part one.
Yeah, we're fixing to deal with the taxes on that stuff.
That's coming up on it, Tim.
I will email you part one, so you can go to the board. We already dug it.
So number four. Let's recognize John McAdams, transferring court to discuss the constable pay.
I wasn't contacted, but I'll be glad to answer any questions. First of all, it's, the action you took in the second meeting in Biloxi in March was to pay the constables through payroll due to an IRS ruling. But I'll be glad to answer any questions. And you approved that in March.
Right. The board has some questions? Anybody?
I think the question was, they still, they will still be able to take out their income tax? We will, from now on, take out their income tax now, right? And before they did.
Yes. The IRS ruling was Madison County and Lee County has adopted the same ruling to pay the constables through payroll because when the county entered into a social security agreement, 218, that dates back to 1952, through the state legislature adopting the state's Social Security Act. So it was implemented by Harrison County. And when you do that, the IRS has a code section that recognizes this signed agreement that says if you are a signed agreement with the social security, these, anybody you pay is a covered employee. So, the FICA, everything, you can issue, before we issued a W-2 for the 2500 that you statutorily pay for, and a 1099 at the end of the year. The IRS says you cannot do that. Same thing Madison County did and they had that fine date. So-
What about their, and I think Marla-
What about their, and I think Marlon had this same concern, what about the, their being able to write off their gas and write off all their expenses? How does, how does that work?
Well, what'll happen at the end of the year, like, my office is a fee-paid office, we have to do an annual financial report to PERS and the auditor. Constables have the same requirement, certific clerk has the same requirement. When you do that, you deduct, and you have a net income. So PERS, if we're deducting for PERS a employer match, which is seventeen point four, before we estimated eleven percent, and at the end of the year, PERS would say, you owe us this for this constable, and they owe. In this case, if you're paying more now, when they turn in their, their yearly report, PERS will do an audit and refund the county and for the constable, and we.
If they pay.
If they overpaid, and if we overpaid.
So on the IRS, I think what she's asking is, and I guess this is, the word for the constables to worry about than us, but if you now get a W-2 as opposed to a ten ninety-nine, then they can't file long form anymore.
They can, they can take some deductions, I think, if I'm not mistaken, they can have an office in their home.
Which is twenty-five percent, like with the residents.
Well, I, I think, I'm not an auditor.
An IRS person.
Jeffrey?
For on twenty-one oh six, you can do the deduction there, and.
With the double.
A lot of CPAs are not familiar with it, but some of them out in address, so you can't file deductions.
Who does your taxes? I'm gonna come see your guy.
I know it's, it's additional cost to the county, but it's beneficial to these elected officials and to the county, because at the end of the year, it's, it's all settled, they file their taxes, PERS contacts us, and.
Well, we've had issues, we've had issues in the past with a couple of them that haven't paid PERS, that then we've had to go get the money out of their check, correct?
Yeah, but if we never, we never got it out of their check, we work with their elected officials.
I remember getting the letter that we had to go.
But you can get a letter till you blew in the face, I mean, when we went in.
The board had to go collect it.
No, clerk, and they notice I y'all that we're doing this, because, but it always has, always has.
So, would that eliminate that, is my question?
Yes.
Perfect.
So they still get, so that I'm clear, they still, they can still use their own car?
That's the only thing they have.
Okay, and that, and there's a special statute for that, I mean, the county doesn't have to provide them with a car, it doesn't have to provide them with gas.
Listen, the board can, I'm sorry.
That's it, 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 they, they are, they fall under the same statute that you do as far as what they can deduct and what they can't.
Right.
I think even, they had concerns about that, whether or not they were gonna have to, you know, do we pay for it, or they pay for it.
But I understand.
I'm finding out.
My duty as your payroll clerk, treasurer, auditor, is when we get rulings like this, we put them in place to protect the county and you. Especially when you know the IRS may potentially audit you and go back three years. So we put it in place, now is it more expense to the county? Yes, it is, but in the long run, they service the justice court, they're the author, or the arm of the justice court, they're paid through private funds, and of course, all the expenses on them to operate.
What is that?
But, boards can choose in the future to buy lights for their car.
Okay, that's what I was gonna say, because I did that.
Yes, the board can do that, but it takes the full board to do that. Can, you know, help support the office of the constable.
How much more does it cost?
Well, he was saying they, they used to budget eleven percent of what their estimated income was, and now it's seventeen point four percent, so.
So a hundred thousand.
I did, I did do a report.
About a hundred grand?
I, I'd say.
I did do a report on what you pay with the ten ninety-nine, your share, because you voted this in at fourteen, to allow this to happen, so since eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, it averages over fifty thousand a year for employer match. How much that will increase, will increase some, but I don't think it's gonna be fifty. Now, your other expenses matching social security, medicating and so forth, because you're the employer for payroll purposes, purposes only, but not, yeah.
I think it increased about a hundred.
I was saying between seventy-five and a hundred.
Yeah, that, that's how much the increase is, or that's how much the total is?
The total.
The total, yeah. Okay.
Do you want to leave my name and address?
That's all I need.
Is there any other questions?
Thank you, that clears it up, it was not clear to me.
Hold on.
What we're talking about payroll only.
Is payroll only because?
The, uh, PERS, the retirement system, as far as the statutory obligations that the board, relationship with the constables and the board doesn't change.
Well.
Other than for payroll purse.
The method of pay is what you've done.
That's what I'm talking.
Because the IRS wants their money.
Yeah.
And they want to make sure the employer.
But the question was about that, apparently somebody brought up the Ischiban Lights Farm and Uniform, whatever. That doesn't change.
No, you, board can still do that.
Can do it or not do it.
Do it or not.
Depending on statutory obligation.
The only thing that's required.
Hold on, hold on.
The only thing that's required on the statute is they get uniforms, we provide their uniforms, and the lettering on their vehicle.
And you can do more if you choose.
Got it, okay, other questions?
Mr. Minga, SUV now.
Number six.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Order concurring in the resolution of the Harris County Development Commission authorizing approving sale two point four seven acres of real property to DFT Land Development for the purpose of locating a damage restoration company and authorizing board president to execute all necessary documents. Do we have a motion?
No.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seven, order concurring in the resolution of the Harris County Development Commission authorizing an approving sale of two point four seven acres of real property to DFT Land Development for the purpose of locating a damage restoration company. Do we have a motion?
No. Second discussion, just curious, why has that particular parcel, I think about sixty thousand dollars more than the other?
When it's the same amount of property that's filed for.
That's what I'm saying, it's the same amount.
It's immediately adjacent to a lovely wastewater treatment facility.
The one.
The one that's a hundred and sixty or better.
You mean the one that's close to it or less?
Cheaper ones adjacent to the wastewater treatment facility.
There had to be a reason, I didn't know why.
What do you think they're flushes for?
But it's an industrial park, right?
Yeah, but.
That's all I had, I just.
And the reason there are two that are exactly the same is it's two parcels, and they, they put a contract on one, decided they wanted a bigger frontage on Seaway, so they put a contract on the other, and we charged them the higher price.
But the appraisal apparently showed.
Yeah, we got an appraisal on both pieces.
Just curious.
And it's a company that's been in business since nineteen seventy-four, they're here in a rental space, and they want to expand, they're doing a lot more business.
What is a damaged restoration company? What are their?
It's called guaranteed restoration services, and now that I've said that, you'll see their trucks all over town today.
That's one like fire, when you have a fire.
Yeah, it's like, it's like Service Master, like, yeah.
Gotcha.
The, the company is guaranteed restoration services, so they got a lot of trucks.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Order concurring in resolution of the Harris County Development Commission authorizing approving acquisition of certain equipment for use in carrying out commissions, operations and maintenance activities at its industrial parks, and authorizing board president to execute the documents. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion, this is for a twenty twenty-one truck purchase, who's using that?
It's our maintenance and utility guys, it's a Dodge thirty, twenty-five hundred, so we need something to pull more heavy equipment than what we've got right now.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item nine, order concurring in resolution of the Harris County Development Commission authorizing approving lease of certain real property located by Bernard Industrial District in Harrison County to CEC for the purpose of locating construction trailer office, and authorizing board president to execute the documents. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries, thank you. Items ten through fourteen been placed on the consent agendas, same appearing to be routine, non-controversial matters on which all supervisors likely to agree. Do we have a motion to approve ten through fourteen?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifteen, tax assessor, order spreading on the minutes personnel changes of the tax assessor's office as listed non-file with the payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
No.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixteen, order approving in county travel reimbursement from tax assessor's office as listed, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventeen, order approving travel and registration fees for Paula Laddner and Renee Landrill to attend IAO course four hundred, June seventh through the eleventh in Biloxi, at estimated cost of eleven hundred dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighteen, order knowledge of receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the twenty twenty real and personal property rose as recommended by the tax assessor. Do we have a motion?
No.
Do we have a second?
Second discussion, I guess they're just, they were erroneous, I assume?
No, not yet.
No, that's just a, for some reason that, I get Tim's answer, but some reason the taxes were wrong, and they're making the adjustment.
Yeah.
They don't have an issue, either, the, the tax assessor's adjustment.
The appraisal itself, it's not an error, it's an appraisal change, based on some reason.
Multiple disagreements.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
That's, that's not uncommon, Rebecca, that's not uncommon, happens.
Item nineteen, order spreading upon the minutes personnel changes for Harrison County tax collectors' offices listed non-file with the payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty, order approving fee settlement payment to Harris County Constable for the month of April twenty twenty-one, as submitted by the Justice Court Clerk and on file with the clerk of the board. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Brittany, you need to start connecting that to this agenda, please. Item twenty-one, order approving trade-off vote for Greg Yilich, Justice Court Clerk, to attend the Justice Court Clerk's mandatory continuing ed conference to be held on May sixth and seventh in Philadelphia, Mississippi, estimated cost of the county is fifty dollars.
Motion.
Do we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-two, consider mechanical engineering services to replace cooling towers at the DHSS Cupport courthouse locations as recommended by Jackie Turner.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Jackie, you're up. What you want us to consider?
The next two.
Right.
Actually, the next two were the one that we talked about last time, and I was, I may have gotten in line. Number twenty-three is the item that we tabled last time, to take it off the table, and twenty-four would be to consider that. That was when Bud Long had been working on negotiating a mechanical engineering contract to replace the two towers. It's a large project, full replacement. During the time we were trying to negotiate it with, negotiate with him, he took another job, he's become less available, we still tried to negotiate through, I thought that that had been kind of a selection before my time, but clearly not. So what we did in item twenty-two was presented a handful of people we contacted, asked them what their typical fee structure was, give us a little bit about their qualifications, their availability, how quickly they could complete the job, and the recommendation coming from that is to use Stevens Engineering.
That's not what this is.
May have, may have.
Sure, we gotta mistake.
On, on twenty-four, you, there's, there's a recommendation that we accept Bud Long as the, as the engineering. However, on, on your letter to us, submitted to us in twenty-two, you're stating that, I think it's Stevens would be the best choice.
I think, I think what.
So we're getting, what I'm saying is, I'm getting a contradictory recommendation from you.
Yeah.
On the letter from Steve, on the letter you submit to us, you're recommending that Stevens would be the best choice, based on, I think, the percentage that they charge, as well as other engineers recommending them, et cetera. But now we go down to twenty-four, and you're recommending that we go with Bud Long.
So item twenty-three and twenty-four are related to bringing the item off the table from the last meeting when it was brought up, since worded exactly the same, it's bringing metal off the table.
But this is not, but it doesn't make sense, hon, because, well, I understand taking it off the table, and then we're gonna, but you've got on here to go ahead and accept him again, and you're telling us that that's not what you want to do.
That's what your recommendation is, and that, but that's contract, contradictory to the letter.
That's not, that's not my recommendation, I thought that item twenty-four had to be put back on exactly as it was worded last time. Item twenty-four was the exact same item, and I was hoping that you would decline.
Okay, that's not, okay, but that's not what that says, then.
I think it's confusion.
She thought she had to put it back on the same way.
I thought that twenty-three takes it off the table, twenty-four you could vote to decline it, and then twenty-two would be the item to choose someone else.
Oh, I thought, oh, yeah, that would make.
Well, twenty-two is not an action item, because it's only considering, so that's not gonna work. And twenty-three and twenty-four, just leave it on the table, or just vote to deny, I guess, but nowhere in here does it.
If it's a, if that's not our recommendation, we won't take it off the table. I don't think we've come to that one yet, Kelly.
No, but it's the next one.
Yeah.
What I, what I would like to see is to take it off the table and then to deny number twenty-four.
Gotcha.
Item twenty-two is to consider the services that were proposed to choose Stevens, and then we would move forward negotiating the contract for them to bring back to you.
All right. So item twenty-three.
It's a procedural.
I'm sorry, I got confused.
So item twenty-three, order taking off the table mechanical engineering services to replace cooling towers and approving the contracts of David Budlong. Do we have a motion to take off the table? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-four, order approving mechanical engineering services to replace cooling towers and approving the contracts of David Budlong.
Motion to deny.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor to deny? All those in favor to deny? All those opposed, motion carries. And you're gonna bring us something back?
So item twenty two is the justification for why Stevens is my recommendate, recommended choice and if the board agrees with that, which I think you voted on maybe not understanding it fully, but if you agree with that, then we'll bring back the contract.
We didn't vote on it. It was a consideration item. So do you have an actual contract from there?
No, ma'am.
Because, so we need that before we can vote, is what I'm thinking.
The, the way that the law reads that you're supposed to make a selection on them based on a qualification and then negotiate a contract, so that's what I'm asking for. If you agree with the recommendation of Stevens, we'll come back with a contract.
Is that what twenty two said?
I want a clarification from Tim and I think he knew that was coming.
That's not what it says.
I want a clarification from Tim based on that, that's the law.
Yeah, because that's not what it says anyway.
I think if I read what Jackie was saying is that somehow or another this board, engineering board sets the regulations that we have to select them and then negotiate them. And I'm of the opinion that, I'd like to go out and be as, or at least a RFP and deal with it, that, I'd like a clarification, I'd like clarification of the statutory obligation we have for that. And I've been dealing with this, sitting on a utility authority as well as this board. I got a problem with it.
Engineers are governed by ethical rules just like bargains. One of the things they cannot do is do what is bid on a project, lowest bid, they can't put a price structure saying, okay, I'll do this for forty thousand dollars because engineering's not like that, it's an hourly issue. They, the only thing I think they get a little bit cross, I think they, what normally is done with professionals is request for some qualification. That request for qualification generally does include a price structure.
Right.
Not a bid on the project because you can't do that, but an hourly rate, those type of things I think do go with an R F Q or, or proposal, however you want to call it.
Yeah.
They cannot do a lowest of best bid in the sense that you would do it on a project because engineering doesn't work that way.
But this is a memo, this is nothing to vote on, this is a memo from Jackie.
And I'm not discussing that right, that's what I'm asking Tim. Then let me ask you this, once, once the RFP is submitted and we look at it and we say, okay, company A, we feel comfortable with their qualifications and maybe their hourly submissions. We look at that, we say, well, that's fine, I would like to talk to company B.
True.
And let's see and ask company B what their hourly things are, costs are.
You can't do that.
Yeah, we can't do that. That's where we don't do it. And if we did more of that, we'd get some better prices.
You might, I hope you would, but you know, that's, you can't do that.
I, I think it depends on how, how much each company wants to work. And if some wants to work, they'll come off that price. It's a, to me, it's, it's a way, I guess, the best, best way to get around the bid process at the same time, actually do it to some extent.
It's, it's just the, the policy issue is whether or not you want chief engineer and that's kind of what you're gonna, in those areas, the law recognizes.
Tim, my, my experience is, because I don't know if this is a fair statement, but you take five engineering firms and pretty much they all, pretty much qualify.
They, they probably do.
They might qualify, but, so then I guess.
I think we dealt with engineers out there that, you know that, Connie, utility authority, all of them are pretty much qualified, is, I mean, there might be some that doesn't have the experience. But, but I'm telling you that we need to look at this closely because I think sometime we could get better prices and get just the same job as well.
So the chair could reckon, the chair's asking the board to make a motion to have her go out for R F Qs. We've already voted.
I think she did that.
Bud Long down, she did not do that.
It wasn't formal.
It was not formal.
It was an informal, we, we requested that information.
So I think it needs, we need to formalize that.
Since we can, we can select services ourselves, she, she shocked it.
But don't you think we need a formal? So you're willing just to take that handwritten memo? So then I'll entertain a motion to allow our engineer to go out formally for R F Qs for these two items.
Is that, is that gonna delay the project or are you gonna?
It's, Dacey's working on it, so far.
All right, when he.
I think she's informally done that.
She has.
I don't think it's been a formal, based on what she tells us in that letter, I see, I see three firms. And she's looked at the firms, she's looked at their costs, percentage costs.
Typical fee structure, right.
Pardon?
Their typical fee structure.
Their fee structure and everything. And I, I don't have a problem with her recommendation because I think she's looked at that and the cost.
I do too, and I think we.
I got a problem. Somebody make a motion, then.
If, 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 the question before the board is, I will make a recommendation that we accept our county engineer's recommendation for Stevens, is that their name, Stevens, right? To, to deal with the engineering process in reference to the cooling towers, both at the courthouse and at the bargaining services.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that and discuss.
Any further discussion?
The board's gonna get another issue to pass upon once the contract is proposed and brought to you, so you're gonna get another issue.
Go ahead, supervisor.
This, discussion.
But this engineer first, I do have specification for that, that contract.
Supervisor Rock, go ahead.
This particular company, I take it, is, is more experienced in cooling towers than the others.
I would say that all those that we contacted, we know are familiar with that type work and are comfortable, we asked them to tell us just briefly how familiar they would be with it and then how quickly they could respond with a product in the interest of getting this work done somewhat quickly. So we were looking at are you qualified?
Five or six weeks, right?
I see if we had a formal R F Q, we would know what kind of experience they had as opposed to reading a sentence on a piece of paper.
That's what she's, anyway, that's all, all my discussion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, no, motion carries. Item twenty five, order approving payment of claims as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Is this pickering, is this the same thing we've been paying for?
Yeah, what are they doing?
Sorry.
Yeah, this is the, the very large, this is that land and road widening project that's, it will drag on for a long time. We're working through the M dot process right now, we did a field review with M dot two weeks ago, I think. And next is beginning the right of way acquisition process, they've done all the, they're working through the comments from that field review. We'll start with right of way acquisition and then move forward with an office review and have the documents ready.
So they are the ones, are they working for?
What are they doing? What my question is.
The design for the, the road development, the road widening project.
So that's, we've been paying them thirty two, forty three, ninety six. That's not something they can just design and we pay for it and that's the end of it? Why is this ongoing, I guess?
It was before hers.
I know, but I'm just curious.
I think the process is expected to take probably in the neighborhood of two to three years completely to get every phase of this done and so they did a full contract with a total amount. I think that that's in the attachments, the total contract amount and then what they're set up to do is monthly progress payments based on what they've completed towards that condition.
So this is all coming off of that?
The main total, it's not anything in addition, it's just out of their total contract amount on a monthly progress basis.
I don't remember.
I don't remember doing the whole big contract, I remember small ones that I can.
Several years, several years ago. That's part of the discussion we have about engineers and I think it's an important issue with the city.
The city had already employed them.
Yeah, the city has, the city has the projects.
City employed, are you paying for them?
No, everybody. The city has the phase to a certain point and then the county, it becomes a county project and we, and we go further down.
And just so the board knows, you get ready, there's gonna be some significant right of way issues in there. Homes and churches and.
We've actually managed to design it where it should not affect any structures.
I remember Gulfport shifted this road caused up, we're working out to pay for a whole church, I don't know if they fixed that or not.
We have fixed that where we're not impacting any structures. We may touch one shed, not another.
That was really a sixteen section lease, right?
I'm sorry?
That was a sixteen section lease.
I think it was.
They were gonna have, they were gonna sell.
Um, on A, on A on this A, A of these, can we have authorization to look at possibly receiving a loan to pay, because we have not received many funds from P M yet and we've already paid out six million, I guess, at this point, we're looking at it maybe almost up to ten, could be up to eight to ten million.
We're looking at.
I'd so like to know before we proceed, how are we paying for this, for pickering? Is that coming out of that bond money?
I'm sorry?
Pickering. How are we paying the costs of pickering on the project?
Item A, lot of bond money.
That was an inter fund loan from the general fund, my memory serves me correctly.
Inter fund loan.
It's being paid from three fourteen right now.
We created a separate fund to track the expenditures of this project. M dot, my understanding is they don't typically pay preliminary fees, so we have to pay that upfront and we transfer the money from the general fund.
So we're.
So that we could pay these invoices as they come in.
So we have, is this a reimbursable deal or?
No. Preliminary engineering fees, my understanding, M dot will not reimburse.
That's our match.
But ultimately, we're gonna have to do, Beverly, is probably, I, I don't know, at some point, did we take this out of that bond money and then later if we need to issue bonds more?
Probably could if it's considered paving, but we have.
Once, once the, once we, once the contract is lit for the road construction, we can't take it out of our general fund, we're gonna have to have some money to pay for that. And that's gonna either have to come from some bond money or we're gonna have to issue some more money.
The, the paving part is the eighty percent match D O T, so the paving part is the eighty percent match D O T and this will contribute to the twenty percent match that we have.
So you should be able.
But it's, it still doesn't cover all of it.
We're talking about, it doesn't cover all of it.
No, we still have the twenty percent.
How much are we talking, how much, we, we got into this without knowing, how much do we anticipate this whole thing costing when we threw, when they cut the ribbon out there on Landon Road? How much is it gonna cost us, Harrison County?
I think we did an analysis on that, it was between four hundred and eight hundred, depending on whether we get special match.
That is one of the.
Million or thousand.
Four hundred to eight hundred thousand.
That's our match, where's the four hundred thousand coming from?
That's my question.
That's what I'm saying, somewhat, at some point.
It's paving, so it could come out of the annual paving appropriation.
Okay.
I mean, that's what the council chooses, but I think when this originally was discussed, initially the match was twenty percent, but M dot may come back and say, no, we'll cover ninety percent or over eighty five percent, but we just didn't know at the onset of the project.
At some point, what I'm trying to say, so that board will know, it's gonna have to come out of that pay, maybe that paving money from, okay.
And I just want to be clear, when Beverly, you just said it's not coming out of district well, you joke then?
No, I mean the whole road.
Okay, the big one, because if it comes out of mine, then I can do nothing else. And this was decided before I even took off.
We don't talk about.
No, no, here's my, my thought process and I apologize.
That's okay.
We are talking about doing an additional bond, y'all remember? So if we need to put that into the additional bond, now's the time to do it.
What I suggest though, that we use the one we got.
Well, we gotta use the one we got first, so yeah, there's plenty there to pay for this, that's what we're doing with the J O, we're using existing and then we'll do the next one, so I think we're good. But if you can get M dot to pay the ninety percent.
Direct that to the engineer.
Yeah, we're going, we're going to be trying to do this, it's called special match credit is the way that it works through and that is whether or not they let these fees apply to the money or not, depending on the amount of funds that are available. So if we can get the cost of the overall project down and we've met all requirements for M dot, requiring these consultants and acquiring right of way, then there's a good, good potential that this will be counted and it'll be a, a smaller.
Is there a possibility of may receive additional funds from J O P C on the road?
If needed, we can request it and it'll really depend on what's available.
Perfect. Pam, did you want to amend? You needed to add something to the motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I needed to give authority for us to seek a loan to pay off for the Zalker Crowder goal, the second A in the B.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty six, order approving the Eighth Amendment of the priority.
Just to clarify now, there's two things that she, we're only approving those invoices.
Correct.
Secondly, we're also approving a loan to pay for those invoices, so that you, back here, we're doing the two.
Order approving the Eighth Amendment of the priority system support agreement with Harris Corporation for the support of a Harrison County emergency communications radio system as recommended by the Harrison County Emergency Communications Commission at their meeting on April twentieth. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Some discussion.
Didn't we just talk about this?
That's a, that's a.
What is it?
Go ahead.
Maintenance, maintenance contract, Gil.
Yes, sir, it's an engineering, engineering support.
About nineteen thousand.
Had it in place for a number of years now.
Call in.
Yes.
Go get IT and tell him that it's come fixed.
But isn't it, isn't it paid through through nine one one?
It's paid through nine one one, yes, all is paid through nine one one and it's plugged into the system.
Gil, there was some confusion if I recall, one, one place it says this cost is nineteen thousand and another place thirty six thousand.
No, sir, it's.
Go get IT, call in.
It's nineteen thousand, paid monthly after they moved out.
Nineteen thousand?
Yeah. And that's nineteen thousand, you're, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty seven, order authorizing and approving work authorization two one zero zero one with Tussa Consulting Services for radio system design and procurement specs as recommended by Harrison County Emergency Communication Commission at their meeting on April twentieth, twenty twenty one. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Discussion, I thought we already hired these people.
No, ma'am, what this is for is.
What?
As Mr. Tucson mentioned previously, our current radio system is twenty two years old, our current technology is at end of life and if some of the board members will recall, we had started the project previously, pre-co with designing the specifications for a replacement P twenty five public safety radio system for the first responders. They got put on hold. Also, since that time, we have added a additional dispatch center with, for the city passenger team. So we're asking now to reinitiate that project and begin the design process, update our needs analysis, et cetera.
What did we just vote on earlier? That Tussa said they were our, our consultant and the way I'm reading this is they're not, I'm confused. Do they work as our consultant or not?
Two different projects.
It doesn't sound like.
He is our consultant for our microwave project, he has also been, he's been our communications engineering consultant since nineteen ninety nine, two thousand.
Well, is it time to maybe look at bidding that out? I mean, that's a long time to use the same company.
But he is, he is currently under a professional services agreement with the board that you approved previously, approved at the current board's term of twenty twenty four. He, we presented his presentation with his fees, et cetera, and the board accepted it previously for the entire four year term, you know, for services for the life of the board.
Well, I just think we need to really consider bidding this stuff out, there's, since nineteen ninety nine, some.
Well, we haven't, we haven't been doing projects since that, that time with Martin. We, he's the, the engineer that is most knowledgeable of our current system and he has done all our needs.
Not according to the gentleman we just heard.
Heard it.
Understand that, but I'll, I'll stand by the sheriff and his employees being able to talk before, during and after Hurricane Katrina. We get those things.
What they basically are is a technical advisor to y'all.
Right.
Probably dealing with that stuff. And, and I guess what I'm, was trying to make a point earlier, Gil, is that the issue we just discussed with the bids coming in in reference to the towers, that's what he does, he makes sure, he makes sure that, for example, these towers that we're going against will be suitable, I presume, to the radio system that we're planning on getting.
Yes, sir, were you utilizing the same, same.
Just because that you, you've always used in a way, you've always done it, doesn't mean it's not time to have changed, so because of that.
Just shop around a little bit.
I'm not gonna support this, but I will call the question. All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, no, motion carries.
No.
No, two noes. What's, what?
So what are we suggesting?
What number are we on?
Wait, she's still trying to figure out.
Go get it.
That we look, that we go look at someone else perhaps before we agree to this?
Well, we just voted.
Yeah.
Well, I know, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, will it delay us on anything that we need to do?
They're under contract.
They're under contract, but we're giving them notice that we need to look this over.
So all we're doing is a maintenance contract here.
I'll agree with that, actually. I'd like some new eyes on it. I didn't like the answer about, I want one hundred and eighty-nine, and he said one three five is good. I'd like to look at it again, too.
There's three noes then.
So no.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was trying to...
I'm sorry.
She didn't understand.
So three noes and two yeses, so how does that work? I would.
They're gonna have to go get another maintenance contract, I guess.
My plan is, it's not a maintenance contract. This is to begin designing, do a needs analysis, and begin designing the specifications for the public safety radio system replacement. It's not a maintenance contract, it's engineering design.
Okay, so you need to go out for bid.
No, number twenty-seven, no, sir.
Or the maintenance contract. Can you have that, I'm at...
Support, the maintenance support agreement was with Harris Corporation, that was item twenty-six.
Okay, that, that was okay.
This is for engineering services to be able to design a new radio.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So to clarify the vote, supervisors and powers, what's your vote?
I'll go with you.
So it's a no?
Yeah.
Rock? A?
No.
I'm a no?
Yes.
Yes.
Guys, the noes have it, excuse me, so you're probably gonna have to do some more for bid.
Next, not for them.
He needs to go out for bid. Item twenty-eight, order approving payment of Mississippi Power Company invoice.
So just, just some explanation, maybe Troy can understand what we're doing. We've had for years them doing this, now all of a sudden, we're going out for another. What, what effect did this...
I guess you had to hurry.
They are currently under contract with the county until twenty twenty-four.
Till twenty twenty-four?
Right, until the end of, end of the board's term, twenty twenty-four.
Well, why are we dealing with this here?
Uh huh, that's my question.
Twenty twenty-four is for maintenance.
Right, this is not maintenance.
This is for a design of a new system radios, separate, and the board...
How much work did they done on the design?
None.
Well, you know, I, I guess you can look at it a bunch of different ways. You can, you can spend a lot more money.
We don't know that.
Well, you do know that, 'cause you got somebody coming in here that doesn't know our radio system. He knows our radio system from front to back. You know, there's, there's nothing he, they do not know about our radio system. They designed a radio system in a vertical place. So when you, if you get another company in here, it could change everything about our radio system, and, you know, I mean, if you go out for a bid, that's fine, I have no problem with that, but I think you're gonna see the numbers come back where they're extremely higher than what he would come back as to the assignment.
I think that would be sad. Yeah.
Okay, but look, on the attachment, there is an agreement for professional consulting services between Harrison County and TUSA, which by the way, is a covenant to Louisiana Company. That's made the sixth of July, twenty twenty.
I thought we're supposed to be looking.
That's what I thought. So, Mr. Holman, how does that affect this budget?
I'm sorry, there's, there's two separate agreements. One of, one of this is...
Well, this one's attached to what we just...
Right, this is under contract to design a new radio, so, take it back. To design specifications to go out for bid on a new radio. So I understand what the board's concern was, that we, this could go out for a request for proposals to get competing engineering firms that would design...
Radio design.
...specifications.
Okay.
Because that's what the board wants.
That's what we want.
Can do that, or ask that to be done.
So we'll ask Mr. Gil to go ahead and start getting some bids. Twenty-eight.
Proposals.
Proposals. RFQs.
So we've been talking.
Right, RFQs, as Mr. Landis. Item twenty-eight, order approving payment of Mississippi Power Company's invoice five nine zero nine five one four three nine one four three M, in the amount of ten thousand three sixty-four sixty-four for telecommunications tower access payable from oh nine seven two eight seven five three oh. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second, this, we're renting, leasing them property, I mean, space.
This is our yearly payment, the price has not increased in the last nineteen years that we've been... Power company cannot pay the problem, they have split the cost of the power directly, and it's the same amount we paid yearly in the last nineteen years.
They're getting a good deal.
So paying them ten grand for nineteen years, have we shopped that round?
No, it's their tower.
It's their tower.
We might be better off building our own tower.
No, you won't. No, you won't.
No, you won't.
Just saying.
No, you won't.
Because you're right, Mr. Gil, if we generate more power than Mississippi Power has to buy the excess back from us.
That's what I am about to... That's what I, Bobby Solangi does, they pay down.
Just thought, I know it's not the way we've always done it.
Don't go there.
I forgot, yeah.
I'm with you, okay, any further discussion?
He changed anything, so...
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, order acknowledging receipt for running on the minutes. Harrison County Emergency Communications Commission audits for fiscal year twenty seventeen, eighteen, eighteen to nineteen at request of all the Harrison County Emergency Communications Commission at their meeting on April twentieth, twenty twenty-one. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
We did it.
Where's the twenty nineteen twenty one? Or y'all about a year behind?
We have, we have not scored that one yet, I know.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty, order authorizing board president's sub-grantings close out checklist for Title II Coronavirus Supplemental Funding Grant, sixteen J C one two four one received, in the amount of four thousand three twenty-five oh five for due court. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-one, consider approving a motor state cookout for all seven senior centers for approximately eighty to a hundred seniors to be held May seventh, twenty twenty-one, at ten a.m. to one p.m. at the Wool Market Prom and Life Senior Center. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Second, discussion.
Tell Beverly for Mother's Day.
This is considered, but it's really at the Wool Market, so it's really just the one.
That's for all of them.
That's for all of them.
Do they know about it? Because I know, too, that they had no idea about it.
Well, they'll probably know after they've approved it today.
They'll know after that, son, you probably have to send that information till they get it approved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Where's the next one?
They hurried, you'd be surprised.
Item thirty-two, zoning administrator, Mr. Patrick.
So item thirty-two is a zoning text amendment, it's different than the other cases, cases thirty-three through forty-one are regular applications to the planning commission. So we'd ask you to concur with the recommendations of the planning commission on all of them, so number thirty-two is different.
All right, well, we're only on thirty-two right now, so what's your recommendation on thirty-two?
So this is a zoning text amendment to update the zoning ordinance regarding a definition of vacant, and it specifies in the changes that an applicant, an appellant would have to pay the corporate order for the transcript that they create. We have a corporate order at every given planning commission.
Please test the question.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All in favor of item thirty-two? Signify by aye. All those opposed?
We need a motion.
Motion carries. Item thirty-three.
We didn't make a motion. I'll make a motion, second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-three, Mr. Paul.
So numbers thirty-three through forty-one are individual applications to the planning commission. Is it possible to deal with all of them, Phil?
So I'll entertain a motion, right, for items thirty-three through forty-one?
Motion.
Concurring with the planning commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-two, order concurring with county administrator on the form of statistic. Forty-two, and on file with payroll clerk personnel department. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Pam, from now on, let's have an IT person in here during our meetings. Thank you. We got plenty of them up there. Item forty-three.
He needs to be watching it.
He should be in here. Gonna wait a second, we're on forty-three, but we'll wait until Mr. Martin.
Martin, can you read off his?
He's got, she's getting... Hall card.
I said she can fix this.
Did you hit the wrong button?
That's all right. Thank you, Claudine. Girl serves a raise, put her on it.
Long time.
Item forty-three, order spreading upon the minutes of personnel changes at the sheriff's office as listed on file with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-four, order concurring with the intervention court on personnel changes listed on file with the payroll clerk. Do we have a motion? Motion, do we have a second?
Second, discussion, intervention court, is that on the youth court, or where?
Judge Midcalf.
Midcalf.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-five, recognize the sheriff's designated representatives and report to the number of persons currently housed at Harrison County jail facilities.
Uh, currently, we have six nineteen, thirty-five misdemeanors, ninety-five, or ninety-four females, fifty-two that have cleared state arrest, and thirty-five federal inmates.
Thank you.
The only thing I'd like to discuss, if we can, is getting lots of complaints, a lot of calls. Rebecca brought one up this morning, reference to open ranges on property in Harrison County. I know me and Tim came up with something a while back, and it was, I don't know if it was just tabled or not looked at, but I think we need to go back to the drawing board and figuring out what we're gonna do with people firing firearms in the county, because it's, it's getting to where it's, somebody's gonna get killed. Numerous reports of bullets through houses, we've taken those reports. This weekend, they're shooting inside a house. It's about, it's less than about six hundred yards behind the house. Rebecca told me this morning.
What could we come up with? Pat, you got any suggestions? I know you could say a subdivision, not within seventy feet, but some of these are all...
A lot of that, unfortunately, but it's just, it's a problem, because you, anything you adopt has to apply countywide.
Right.
It's a kind of real problem. You can do something on subdivisions, but you really already have that on the books and the statutes without a subdivision. It's just very difficult to get a hold of, but it's up to the board, if you want to try to drive...
I think you just, it might be, you just collect all that data and bring it...
We got the data, I got a whole...
The data, I mean, I don't know what the data's got to do with it, we need to come up with something.
Well, incidents will help our case.
Yeah, but not really, man, I got one on Coleman Road, you mentioned one.
I have Mackenzie Road this week.
I got them all over.
A lot of our district.
It's, so the data's not gonna do anything, we just need to come up with a, with a solution to say, you know, I think the one that me and Tim came up with was, obviously, anything can be changed and, and fixed to a certain degree, but I think that that's a base to go off of. Use that, what we came up with, and say, let's use this as a base and kind of go from there.
Which is what, I'm sorry, no subdivision?
Yeah, exactly, ended up on so many feet of a house.
It was so many feet of a house, I believe, or residents, or an outdoor, is what it was, but it's, it's, it's just getting to the point to where it, it's a common issue every weekend, it's getting warmer, people are shooting more. It's, somebody's gonna get hurt, and if, if, I don't bring it up to y'all, but, you know, it's gonna be a lively issue.
Pat, can you work with Tim and the sheriff and have something to present to us, maybe at Monday's meeting?
Yes, ma'am, and the last time that someone presented to the board about a concern in their neighborhood, they brought up that Jackson County had adopted something, so...
Which was pretty good.
I would look quickly at Jackson County.
Are we talking zoning?
Yeah.
Well, zoning, it won't, zoning's gonna be a problem, but you do ordinance...
Zoning will be a problem with what Troy's talking about, Troy wants that making ordinance, all right? I mean...
You just do an ordinance, make a criminal...
I, I think it needs to be enforced, yeah.
Yeah.
It's enforceable.
What I would zone, though, because I'm shooting a gun, I mean, what I did go to the zoning board before I shoot a gun?
And they call us two...
Okay, well, never mind, then, Tim and sheriff get together, we got to gather.
Have knowledge about the subdivisions and things, but we'll, we'll work on something. We'll look at Jackson.
Jackson County had a pretty good one. Item forty-six, order spreading on the minutes, the final close-out documentation for the triad grant, one two five four five three. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-seven, order approving payments of claims as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-eight, order spreading upon the minutes following executed documents. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-nine, order approving payment to Machado Batana for professional engineering services, Davis County Law Enforcement Training Academy. Do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty, order authorizing payment to Coast Selective Power for constructing approximately point two two miles of electric distribution line to serve Harrison County Law Enforcement Training Academy in the amount of six thousand twenty-five dollars and eighteen cents. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-one, order approving mileage reimbursement for in-county travel for the following employees. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-two, order approving transfer of one hundred and fifty thousand from general fund oh oh one one two one nine five seven into the TORT fund. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-three, order authorizing inventory clerk to correct the county inventory by removing duplicated assets for E M S O F items. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-four, order authorizing disposal of assets for attached list and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-five, order approving payment of thirty-four seventy-seven thirty-nine to out to planning and design for the Active Living Initiative. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-six, order acknowledging receipt of the March twenty twenty-one travel card payable from various accounts in the amount of two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-seven, order authorizing reimbursement to the general fund in the amount of three seventy fifty-six for repair work performed on fire services vehicles. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty, what, act seven, fifty-eight? Order authorizing the inter-fund loans for the attached schedule. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-nine, order authorizing chancellor clerk to open a new bank account with people's bank deposit of the money that the county is going to receive from the American Rescue Plan Act. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, seeing a lot of us open it with a, a plan, a prayer, and a hope that we're gonna get money?
Well, we're supposed to be receiving the money around May to tenth, um, the fifty percent, the half, half of it.
Which is how much?
Around twenty million. So, the other one is like twenty, yeah.
We need to workshop with them.
But we don't have the regulations on what we can spend it on yet.
It's four, it's four things you can spend it on.
It's not, it's pretty.
Water, sewer.
Well, I understand.
Broadband.
Yeah, water, broadband, tourism, and, uh.
Tourism.
Pretty, and that's about it. Water and sewer broadband.
How do we decide what you're paying us?
Infrastructure.
I mean, why Peoples?
The other was infrastructure.
Broadband is infrastructure, though.
Well, but it's different.
Yeah, but it's always.
It's separate, though.
Why Peoples paying?
Structure does, does not include roadways.
Peoples is the selected deposit.
I don't think so, but you can check.
Every two years, uh.
Nice switch.
Requirement in state law that we advertise for depositors, and they are the selected depositors.
So, that's who is selected.
Yes, yes, they are believed depositors.
So, every two years we give, I just wanna give other local banks a chance.
Um, other, other departments use different things, but actually, they just changed that legislation, too. So, instead of every two years, it's going out every four years to change.
Okay.
To advertise for those depositor services.
Now, may I, may I, one question, cause again, somebody, whether it's infrastructure, with that money, when you say infrastructure to me, you're talking about roadways, et cetera, et cetera. That does not include infrastructure as we generally think of it. Just broadband?
At the conference that the county administrator and I attended, um, a couple of weeks ago, they said, but now it's very, very limited uses, and they can't come back and change the uses of that. But the infrastructure that they're referring to is broadband, and it could be used for just very few things, and one of them was lost revenue, which, you know, I think, you know, that would be the use that we had for, uh, twenty-twenty. But the recommendation was to segregate that money in a separate bank account and a separate fund when it comes in. But to also monitor the legislation as it comes out, because it's a new administration that's governing the use of these funds. And right now, there's just not a whole lot of information as far as the allowable uses. We did ask the question, would the county potentially have to pay this money back? And it was said yes.
Uh-uh, that's not what, Ken and I went and met with Delbert Housman and that was, we got the opposite answer.
Well, state auditor's office made a comment that we could have to pay it back if it's not used by the end of, I believe it was twenty-four.
Yeah, he said we had three years.
Is there any way in that, there was nothing mentioned about emergency services or any of those things?
No.
That was mentioned, that it could be used for payroll purposes for emergency services?
That wasn't mentioned at the workshop Ken and I went to.
Well.
Nobody really knows yet.
Mm-mm, they don't. My understanding from the.
You could pay firemen, but they're not gonna build them a fire station.
My understanding it wasn't, could not use any of the funds for capital purposes such as building or road or.
That's more direct.
That might change.
More direct to COVID than anything else or illness.
That's not what we were told. We were told the opposite of that.
Well.
And I got my notes in the office.
The state auditor's office, but they did.
I didn't talk to the state officer, I talked to the.
Yeah, we, we, uh.
Somebody knew, yeah.
Yeah, it's still, yeah, it's still relative to the new, but from what Lieutenant Housman was, I mean, Lieutenant Governor was saying, well, this is a great opportunity. So, obviously, this money can be spent in ways that we can benefit from it for the years to come. We just gotta figure out how that.
He said, that's, matter of fact, that's what he recommended, that whatever we spending on lasts for a couple of generations. Wasn't that what he said?
So, water, sewer, infrastructure, broadband, I mean, this, it, it all sounds the same now, but I'm sure that, that can be separated. We just had to get someone to come in and give us a.
Well, he did.
Well, he, he, I mean, from a specific sense, boy.
But the order is for after the fact. I think that, right now, is the people that's doing the money.
Y'all, if our county, if our county continues to grow like it's growing, and we don't do something for fire protection, it's gonna be, it's not good. It's not good now.
Okay, did we vote on number fifty-nine? All those in favor, signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item six, the order approving resolutions of a matter of regular and special home state exemptions rejected by the Department of Revenue for the year twenty. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?